The enforcement zoning board review is now in session. Tonight's meeting is a hybrid meeting of both in-person and Zoom. With that, all voting members tonight are in attendance. Any tags are displayed. So first item on the agenda is the minutes of the February 18th meeting. Could I have a motion to accept those meeting minutes as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I therefore make the motion to approve the February 18th, 2021 minutes.
And motion has been made by Mr. Furrow and seconded by Mr. Ward to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next item on the agenda is a petition by Christopher Burnett. Sumo Drive Tax Access is not pointing to a lot of 55. It's my understanding that the petitioners have retained counsel who's going to ask to continue that. But prior to that, is Mr. Gavin on the phone?
I'm here.
Gavin, a question for you. So this came before us less than a year ago. In fact, it's 11 months. So if I, and I know they're going to ask probably to continue to next month, which we give it a year. But if we were to hear it tonight, it would have to be a substantial change. And the board would have to agree to that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure. But if they ask to continue to August, then it will be a full year and we can read, we can hear the petition again.
I mean, I, I think so. I mean, I think it would be hyper-technical to, to say refile and have to pay the fee again.
I totally agree, but I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Thanks Gavin. Okay, is representation for Burnett on?
Joseph Hook, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So I am going to be representing the Burnett's with respect to their application for a special use permit with respect to a ground-mounted solar system. We also intend in the alternative to file for a variance. And, and that is, I didn't contemplate the reason that you mentioned in terms of the continuance, but I, I need to be prepared for also a variance as well. So I'm asking that the matter be continued to the August calendar.
Okay, and based on what you've just said, you're also do then also petition for a variance request on top of special use permit, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't this the third time they continue?
No, this is a second. This will be the second. So I'm good with two, but after that, correct? I totally agree. All right. Could I have a motion then to continue the petition of Christopher and Deborah Burnett to our regularly scheduled meeting of August 19th?
So moved.
Could I have a second? Second. Motion has been made in second to continue the petition of Christopher and Deborah Burnett to our regularly scheduled meeting of August 19th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hook.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our regular agenda. And I'm going to break from the agenda and go directly to item two on the new business, which is the appeal of the planning board's decision regarding permitting construction of a driveway. Late this afternoon, an email went back and forth between counsel for both the appellant and Scotty plus, et cetera. And they're all in agreement. They've asked for continuance so they can try to work this matter out. So based on that, could I have a motion to continue the appeal of Mark Bouvar and Marjorie Gray to our regular scheduled meeting of August 19th? Chairman, so moved. Mr. Furrow has moved. Could I have a second? We have a second. So motion has been made in second to continue the petition of Mark, the appeal of Mark Bouvar and Marjorie Gray to our August 19th, 2021 meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that takes care of that one. Okay, moving on now to our new business. We have a, an appeal of Chip and Pam with Quinn owners for tax assessors not 51 lot 26B. Feeling the building inspector planning board's decision on a tent that has been erected on their property and apparently is lived in. Since reason for appeal during COVID-19 pandemic on vaccinated Sunday, it's temporary haul. Are the Quins on? Right here.
If the Quins are on the Zoom call, please raise your hand now so we can promote you to panelists for the discussion. Again, if the Quinn, if Chip or Pamela Quinn are on the Zoom call, please raise your hand now. And if you're dialed in, you can dial star nine, raise your hand, and then star six, go and meet yourself.
Okay, let's go back to Mr. Gavin at this point. Hey Gavin. So Gavin, it appears that we don't have any representation or anyone on the appeal that's been filed by Chip or Pam with Quinn. What's the board's options on? I'm not into continuing this. Can we vote on the appeal based on what we have in front of us?
I, I think that's within the board's discretion. I think it's within the board's discretion to continue and have someone call them as well, which, you know, the board has done in the past. But I think either of those options are within the board's discretion.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, so I'll open up to discussion on what the board would like to do on this. Mr. Chairman, I think this is pretty straightforward. It's a clear violation of so many important sections. I'm ready to deny the appeal. Okay, is any? All right, and I have to agree with, with Mr. Ward as well. I actually did get out and visit the site. I would think if this were of this utmost importance, that they would be online. They were well aware of this, they filed the appeal. So basically, I'm going to take a vote and it's either to grant or deny the appeal. Everyone has read the notice of violation. It's not allowed use. So based on that, Chip Quinn is before the vote.
Yeah. Should we check if Kevin is able to comment?
Yeah, we're good. Yeah. Gavin, you there?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear what Mike said.
I even want to know if we have to open it up for public comment.
Uh, yeah, it is a hearing, so I, I would do that.
Okay. Yeah. Good point. Very good point. So yeah, you want to come up, please?
Sure.
Sure. Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth. Your whole name and address, the law.
Robert Douglas, 26 Iowa, enforcement. Okay, so we noticed that the vacant had moved in the neighborhood maybe mid, end of May. It has, you know, progressed to a completely undesirable condition. He frequents, frequent walks in the neighborhood, shirtless, completely, you know, completely dis- disarrayed. He defecates on the outside of his tent, you know, clear view of anyone driving by or small children that live in the area. You know, every house around his encampment has children under the age of 18 that are a bare witness to him and his conduct. So we, you know, the neighbors, myself, feel very, very strongly that this person has violated, I guess, the basic code of human decency to that, that neighborhood.
Just out of curiosity, because I, I've driven by it at various times. Does he own a vehicle?
He does. It's a surprisingly nice looking little Volvo mid-sized SUV.
Okay.
At one point, he had a dog that would just cry the lack of better words. It was seeming through all, all hours of the day. Not sure if it was just unattended to or what was happening with the dog, but it was obviously in a state of distress.
No, and I also noticed when I was there the very last time, it was just a couple of days ago, that somebody was actually pulling the lawn.
That, that's gone off for many years. Eight quarterly, now comes out with a tractor and takes down the brush.
So somebody that's somewhat maintained that property is aware of that situation. I mean, it's hard to just not be aware.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Do we have anybody? No, we do have one. There we go.
Amy Duffel, if you could, please provide your full name and address for the record.
Yes, first of all, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Amy Duffel, I live at 74 High Hawk Road here in Portsmouth. So our lot is right next to this plot where the tent is and.
Are you the house when I walk from the road back towards the tent? I see your house.
If you were standing on High Hawk Road, looking at the field and looking at the tent, we are the house directly right next to.
Okay.
To the right.
All right.
Right next to the lot. We noticed the tent, it first went up on May 2nd, I believe. I have a picture with that date on it, so it's been quite a while. I completely would agree with everything that Rob, our neighbor, said. We've had a lot of noise disturbances due to the presence of not just one person living in the tent, but two, as well as the dog. So there have been noise complaints, animal welfare complaints on top of the sanitation issues. And so this has been going on for quite some time. And it got to the point where my two children actually did not want to play in the backyard while those, the occupants were present due to their behavior. The lewd language that they use, which is audible from, you know, quite far away. I can hear it on my patio. And so it's just been a general disruption to everybody's quality of life while this, these two occupants have been living here.
So there's actually been more than one occupant living there?
There were two, yes, consistently.
Thank you. And they're still living there as of recent, correct?
Um, I believe, I have not seen anyone for the past maybe three to four weeks.
That's what I asked about the vehicle, because like I said, I've gone by various times and I haven't seen a vehicle there at all. So I was just curious whether they're still living there or not, so.
Right, I don't believe they are there at present, but it was about two solid months that they were there. They would leave during the daytime and return late afternoon and stay through morning, if not, you know, entire stretches of days at a time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else?
There we go. Robin Hannan, if you could give your, your full name and address for the record.
Looks like your mic's muted.
Robin, if you could unmute.
I'm sorry. Robin Hannan, 97 Canton Avenue, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
Okay, go ahead, Robin.
Well, on behalf of myself and my neighbors, I've been here for 26 years. And I'm finding that if there's a porch on the new property, it makes a problem with our view in the neighborhood. At this time, I would like to have my fiancee who.
Ms. Hannan?
Yes.
We're on a petition we're hearing is the appeal petition. I believe you're talking about the, let's see, probably the Wester Streeter.
Yes.
Really? Yeah, we're not at that petition.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
All right, but just stay on and we'll get back to you once we get to that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Okay, is there anyone else on that would like to add to the appeal of Chip Quinn regarding the High Hawk Drive enforcement?
Nicole and Tori Bartlett. If you could down, please give your full name and address for the record.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, my name is Nicole Bartlett and I live at 45 Greylock Drive in Portsmouth.
Okay.
We live next door to the Duffels, so I'm on the corner of High Hawk and Greylock. And our backyard, you can see into the field where the tent is. And I just wanted to echo everything that Rob and Amy said. It's, it's been rough. My kids have not wanted to play in the backyard because of this guy. He's had parties. He is, he definitely had somebody living with them. You could hear the dog crying. It was heartbreaking. I called the police once to check on the dog. Just echo everything they said as well.
Okay.
Oh, and I wanted to say the tent is still there and they moved in a grill.
I know. The kitchen that's up right now doesn't do a justice, because if you look at it nicely, clean around it, there was nothing for that now.
No, it's disgusting now.
Yeah, it's all overgrown and everything else.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone else? Okay, see none. The board will now take a vote whether to deny or grant the appeal of Chip Quinn with Zero High Drive Tax Access is not 51 lot 26B. Mr. Ward?
Mr. Chairman, I vote to deny the appeal. Clearly, the use of a tent and a residence without sanitary facilities violates the zoning ordinance. And the building inspector and the zoning enforcement official were correct in issuing this notice of violation. So I vote to deny the appeal.
Thank you. Mr. Furrow?
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to deny the appeal for the reasons stated by Mr. Ward.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz?
I vote to root the appeal.
Deny the appeal.
Deny the appeal, sorry. For reasons previously stated.
Thank you, Mr. Madiga.
I vote to deny the appeal for the reasons previously stated.
Thank you. The chairman also votes to deny the appeal as well. I concur with Mr. Ward. This is not allowed use. And the building inspector, zoning enforcement called this one correct. It's not allowed use. And that's it. People have to take it all down and move it. So that appeal has been denied. Okay, next item on the agenda is the petition of Lester Streeter and Leslie Perillo seeking a dimensional variance for front yard setback and lock coverage and special use permit to construct a 5.7 foot by 12 foot deck on a non-conforming lot of record located at 107 Canton Avenue. So do we have? So, very good. You, Mr. Streeter?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Streeter. Not used to having people in here after an over here. Mr. Streeter, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth. Okay, could I have your full name and address, the law?
Lester Streeter, Martin Rosear Terrace, downtown Rhode Island.
Okay, Mr. Streeter, why don't you explain to the board what you'd like to do?
The owner of the property, I'm acting as a petitioner. I'm building a house and been there at 47 Canton Avenue. And the street setback to the house is using the average of the two adjacent properties. And it's 13.285 feet. We're building a house at 15 feet, but normally we'd like to have a deck on the front, coming out 5.7 feet, 12 feet wide to get better views of the, of the water and keep in the neighborhood. Just about every single house on the inside of the street has a porch, still in the same thing. Back in 2005, the builder at the time of the house next door, Dean Leonard, I believe it is, petitioned for what for variance, similar to what we're doing. And it was approved. And also at the same time, the builder also, the owners submitted a petition to get also a variance for a deck, which was approved, but the house was never built. And we feel that there's no obstruction of the deck to hinder the space for any future fire protection equipment from entering the property. The deck cannot interfere with any light or air between neighboring homes. I attach the pictures to the petition. Of all the neighboring houses that have decks, some of which were proposed.
It also attached all the formal, former decisions as well, again.
Lock coverage setback would be equal to or less than the lock coverage of other homes in the neighborhood. And the petition sees no detriment to the annual, the deck is still.
So question for you. So the proposed distance to the property line is 9.3 feet, correct? I'm going by the application. And you're seeking a basically a 4.4, 4 and a half foot setback. Now, that's to the property line, correct?
Correct.
How far is it in the property line to the street?
It's another 15 feet.
Right. That's, so to the street, you're, what? Yeah, you're not even close. Okay. We bring that up all the time, because originally it was designed down there, the white road. You have a street, city wires on it, which the town has never followed through on. So you would still, even with the, so even with, if the variance is granted, you would still be at least, at least another, what, 15 to the?
15, 20 feet.
To the, to the rolling town. Okay.
And the one, one thing I had back when we were doing the plan for the house, the engineer had specified on the plan that between the deck to the left and to the deck, your stairway to the right, there's this discrepancy from 2005 until now of what our actual average of building is. And we went with a more conservative number of 15, or whatever it is, 13.87 feet, 85 feet, where before, back in 2005, it was 10 feet.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Streeter? Okay, Mr. Streeter, I'm just going to run through and I know you kind of hit some of them. But because it's a substandard lot of record, I do have to go through that criteria. So this was allowed, would it still allow adequate space for fire protection?
Yes.
Would it provide adequate light air between buildings?
Yes.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect neighboring properties?
No.
Would it create lock coverage and setbacks, lessen the average lock coverage and setbacks of neighboring properties? Would it impose substantial detriments to the public or immediate neighbors? No. Okay. Thank you. I just have to ask for butters or interested parties to speak. I know we did have one woman. So, Mike, do I go to the butters?
Unmute. There you go.
Hello, can you hear us? Hi.
Hello, can you hear us?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you, thank you. Robin Hannan, once again, 97 Canton Avenue. I've lived here for 26 years. And I feel the porch will be an obstruction in, in our neighborhood. And the building, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the, first of all, the house, the lot was, was purchased. They built the monstrosity of a house that doesn't fit with the rest of the neighborhood.
Hang on a second.
Okay.
We know who Robin is, but the gentleman that's speaking, we didn't hear you.
I'm her fiancee, Edward Haynes.
And he's also a resident at 97 Canton.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, proceed.
So the lot was purchased and then this monstrosity of a house was built that doesn't fit with the rest of the neighborhood. Robin's been here 26 years. It sticks out much farther than the other house. And not only does it obstruct the view and affect us from our side of, of our home, but now they want to add an additional deck after already extending the house farther out than the house next to it. And, and so we just feel it's unfair. And on, on top of that, we found the house is up for sale for $750,000 and before it's even built.
And the people aren't even going to be, they're flipping the house.
Yeah, it's just, it's just unfair. And I think if you folks, I don't know if you've been down here, you probably don't have the opportunity to drive down and deal with everything that comes across to the board. But if you were here and saw what was going on in this lovely neighborhood of the 26 years, you would agree. But, you know, again, you guys have the vote, but that's how we feel. And I believe there's someone else that probably wants to speak too, which is the exact, our neighbor that's directly next to us. They're the closest to the house.
Okay, well, first of all, a couple of things I have to get out, and that is, views are not rights. And the board cannot contain, not take into consideration, somebody's view gets blocked. That's not a right. And it's not anything the board can consider to deny a entrance request, just so you're aware of that.
Okay.
As far as members never getting down there, I'll personally speak for myself and could probably personally speak for Mr. Ward as well, because we've been doing this so many years. I visit every property every month. And I've been down Convent Point, I don't know how many times, even in the past couple of weeks for various other things as well. So we're, I'm fully versed and the board's fully versed, because we hear a lot of petitions down there. So, yeah, we are aware of what's going on down there. But also keep in mind that when people say that houses, you know, to use your term, these monstrosities, do I like them? Not necessarily, but the building code requires that to be built, which makes it larger than, ah, the actual house is one story off the ground because of the floodwater and breakaway panels. So anybody that has an older home down there, if they ever decided to, you know, remove it and may have do anything, they may end up having to do the same stuff, just to be aware of that.
Okay, yeah, well, that. Okay, yeah, well, that, no, I appreciate that, because we're, you know, we're, we're new, we're new at this, and Robin's new at this. We've never had any issues in the past, you know, because like, you know, this neighborhood's an old neighborhood, and that lot's been sitting there a long time. So this is all new, um, but it, it definitely, you know, to our opinion, we don't think it's fair that you should be adding another deck and making it a bigger, a bigger uh, obstruction, whether it's view or not, it just, to me, it's just overdone. And we saw, when we talked to the builder, he said that the house that they mimicked, it was the same, same plan, was the house behind it on the next street. And uh, they built the porch within the house in the corner. Instead of making it come out, they built it in so that it faced the view of the water. Now, let's face it, guys, you know that they wanna build that deck because they wanna get more money for the house and get a gain of property, which is fine. Everybody's entitled to that, it's capitalism. But they're doing that, and they're doing it for the view. So we're talking about views, but you say views doesn't matter, so. Uh, all, all I can say is we object to it, and we appreciate you coming and taking a look, or you already have maybe. And we, we appreciate you voting in our favor if you, if you can. I mean, that's all we can do, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you for sharing that.
Okay.
All right, I do believe we have another person on, it's, we have a phone number, so.
Yeah, it's uh, four oh one, four four seven, two oh five nine. Do you wanna, uh, might you use it, the, if I can sound on? Can you give your name and your phone number for the record? I mean, and address? We're just calling in, four oh one, four four seven, two zero five nine.
Sorry about that, I was on mute. Yeah, this is uh, James Piner at one oh three Canton. Um, I live next door to the house under construction. Could everyone hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, excellent. First, I just wanted to, you know, I wanna thank the board for, you know, allowing the public an opportunity to speak on this. Really appreciate it, and I wanna say, you know, hello to all my neighbors, thanks for calling in. Um, I just wanna start, I've just got a few comments here. I just wanna say first, you know, I objected to this variance. Um, I think that, you know, I echo all the comments that our neighbors have made. But the, the one thing that, that, that I find really, really interesting is that they're requesting this variance, and the builder has already built a house that had a balcony in his plan on the street, one street over. They knew that they were gonna build this, this balcony, they put in the sliding doors on the front of the house. So this was planned all along, and yet they're requesting a variance. That seems odd to me. Um, the house is for sale, you know, I'm echoing everything that Eddie said. Um, you know, again, capitalism, no problem with that, everybody can make money, not, not an issue. Um, but I do think that this sets a precedent. Um, and I, and I think that, you know, seeking out this variance, not submitting any of the original plans, um, I don't think that's a good look. And um, yeah, that's, I mean, that's really all I have to say on the subject.
Okay, and, and the board understands that, I mean, yes, we have seen petitions where it's both easier to ask forgiveness than it is permission sometimes, but in some particular cases, and what's odd again about Common Fence Point, as you probably are aware, there are many people that think the street is the property line, and they design houses, start building houses, or start putting additions on, things like that. And it's only after the building inspector gets involved that they realize that that's not the property line, you know, and you've got another ten or fifteen or twenty feet to go before you get there, so. And now all of a sudden the fire is buried, so. I've seen that happen sometimes, those are honest mistakes, but I'm not gonna say that they're all honest mistakes.
Sure, just, just to add to that point, um, my wife and I were, were involved in kind of a discussion over our property line. Turns out we've got a, um, an irregular lot size, and uh, you know, when, you know, when, when this, when this property was first being developed, that was, that was kind of a topic of conversation where exactly the property line was. So before they even, you know, started building, um, you know, that, that conversation was had, uh, just, just to note that.
Well, just be thankful you're not in another part of Common Fence Point where houses are on different property lines, because it was miss surveyed eons ago.
Yes, sir, right.
All right, anything else you'd like to add, sir?
No, no, sir, that's it. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
All right, thank you.
Have a good evening, bye.
You as well. Do we have anyone else, Mike?
Again, last answer here, um, if you could raise your hand, the, um, Mr. Matt, do you get a follow comment?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question for the petition.
Absolutely. There, there is someone who, um, just, okay.
Yeah, we have.
Sorry, Kate Piner, you could, uh, unmute yourself and give your full name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Katie Piner. I also live at one oh three Canton Avenue. My husband just spoke. I just wanted to, um, say a couple of things if that was okay with the board.
Absolutely.
Fantastic. Um, I also just wanna say that, like, uh, my husband and my neighbors, I appreciate the time that you guys put into this and, and you listening to everything that we have to say. Um, what I just wanted to say is, what I find disappointing in this entire process is that the town of Portsmouth has rules and regulations that are very thoughtful, and this builder knew exactly what that he was doing. And the owner always intended to sell this property. And knowing all of this, they still decided to make a building that was large, as large as possible, and then go ahead and add for it this variance in. And to me, as, you know, somebody who likes to follow rules, I just, I find that baffling. I mean, he's a builder, he knows they took the frontage of our property and the frontage of our other neighbor's property, and they decided to to, just totally dismiss it. And to me, I mean, neglecting town rules, I find unacceptable and abusive, and I feel as though they are just trying to circumvent the process, and I just don't appreciate that. And uh, that was all I wanted to add.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Gordon, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have a question for the petition. The variance request, uh, for a twelve by five point seven deck, is that the only deck on the property?
Yes.
Can you, can I say?
Absolutely. The lot already had a septic system on it, on the property. Back in two thousand and five, dump can actually build a, put these two septic systems. They sold the house, built the house next door, rented it for a while, and sold it. And but our deck is not, we propose it to be just going to the same elevation, but just it's out from the street as the one next door that was built and put in the back in two thousand and five. If, if we don't get a, we have, we have a foot and a hat to do a little two cat deck. We had to irate, except for getting some block coverage variance, right?
Anybody else have any questions? We have to do? No? Okay, thank you. Board will now vote, um, so Lester Streeter is before the board for Texas Assistors, map three lot seventy. He can a special use permit for substandard law of record to install a deck that is looking for a four point five, five foot front yard variance and a one point seven one percent lot coverage variance. Uh, Mr. Gordon?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'll take the, um, special use permit for substandard law of record first. Petition will approve all the criteria and meets the ordinance in my opinion, so I vote to approve that. In regards to the dimensional variances, a deck is a reasonable request, and this deck is twelve by five point seven, which is not excessive. It's a permitted accessory use in a residential zone. The lot is only four thousand square feet. And although I sympathize with the others, the petitioner met all the criteria in, or bolden, excuse me, building permit. It's within the thirty-five foot height limit. And a lot coverage variance of one point seven one percent on a four thousand square foot lot is one of the lowest variance requests I've ever seen. Typically, in Common Fence Point, you see twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty percent. So, in my opinion, this is a reasonable request. And in regards to the front yard setback, given the fact that there's an additional fifteen feet to the prop, to the roadway, a four point five five variance request is extremely low. I think, uh, to deny the petitioner the right to have a deck would amount to a hardship more than their inconvenience, so I vote to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Fieron?
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve the special use permit, the lot coverage variance and the front yard setback variance for reasons cited by Mr. Gordon.
Thank you. Ms. Harwitz?
I vote to approve all three variances for reasons previously stated.
Thank you. Mr. Wadiger?
I also vote to approve all three.
Thank you. Chairman also votes to approve special use permit for substandard law of record, and also the uh, front yard setback and the dimensional, uh, variance, uh, I'm sorry, lot coverage variance request. Uh, I prefer from this board, you know, um, this board has granted in the past two or three similar homes right on Canton Avenue, a similar request. Again, a one point one five lot co, or one point seven percent lot coverage variance is extremely low in Common Fence Point. Most anyone, regardless of your house, can't do anything in Common Fence Point without some sort of variance request. So again, I think to deny most of more than their convenience, um, so the board has voted to approve, so it's approved.
Thank you.
Okay, last item on the agenda tonight is a petition by Benjamin and Kelsey Godak, seeking a dimensional variance for rear yard setback and lot coverage, a special use permit for substandard law of record to put a two hundred and fifty-four square foot above ground pool on a non-conforming lot of record, uh, which is located at one twenty-seven Mass Lloyd Ave. Can we have the Godaks here? Yeah. There you go.
Oh, there he is.
There he is. It looks like he's muted, well, he's muted and his video is almost.
Hi.
Oh, now we can hear you.
All right.
Now we can see you.
All right, that works.
All right, now, I know where we're going, but could you raise your right hand, please? Swear to tell the truth?
I swear to tell the truth.
Okay, could you give your full name and address for our record, please?
Benjamin Peter Godak, one twenty-seven Mass Lloyd Ave.
Okay, so tell us what you'd like to do.
Uh, so I wanna put in a above ground pool. It's a eighteen foot round in the backyard. Obviously, you know a lot about Common Fence Point, just listening to the last, um, variance. So the way the backyard's set up is it's, um, rectangular shape, and the left side is all, uh, septic system. And then the right side's where my open areas, so I have, um, five feet to the back property line with the size of the pool that we're requesting.
Okay, so, let me make this a little bit easier for you. So if I'm not mistaken, and I'm looking at an aerial photograph here, behind you are the railroad tracks.
Uh, yes and no, so it's the power lines and then the railroad tracks are further back.
Right, but there's no residential property, is there anything behind you?
That's correct, there's nothing.
And I don't know if you know all your neighbors, but right down the street from you is Robert McCall?
Uh, say it again?
A neighbor down the street from you, Robert McCall?
Yes. He's right of me.
Just for the board's knowledge, about a couple of months ago, we approved the garage to be built in the back of this Falls property.
Correct.
Someone to walk, to be requested here, but it's a pool, just so everyone knows. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. So this is a above ground pool, it's only an eighteen foot. Is it round or square?
Uh, it's a round, it's, uh, eighteen foot round, forty-eight inches high.
You know, the, um, the town building code requires six foot fencing, I know in some cases above ground pools have a fencing option to go on the top, that will be there.
That's correct, so it's forty-eight inches high, and then there's a twenty-four, uh, inch fence add-on to make the six.
Right, and then a locking ladder, of course, correct?
Correct.
All right. All right, understanding you also are, because it's a substandard law of record, um, I do have to ask you questions as it pertains to these special use permits. So, uh, if this were allowed, would it allow adequate space for fire protection still?
Correct. I'm a firefighter, so that's important.
Okay, would it provide adequate light and air between buildings?
I'm sorry, you broke up.
Would it provide adequate light and air between buildings?
Correct.
Would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect any of your neighboring properties?
No, it shouldn't affect anybody. It's in the backyard, pretty secluded.
Would it create lot coverage or setbacks, lessen the average lot coverage and setbacks of your adjacent properties?
No.
Uh, would it impose a detriment to the public or immediate neighbors?
No, it'll be all up the code with the fence and locking ladder, be, no issues there.
Okay. Any, any questions from the board at all? Okay, um, I just have to ask for any buttons or interested parties. So, do we have anyone that wants to speak on this?
If you wanna give a follow comment, please, uh, use the raise hand, uh, function of the to that.
Yeah, so, okay. So, Ben and Kelsey Godak, before the board protects us as map five lot one, they're seeking a fifteen foot rear yard setback variance and a five percent lot coverage variance, and also a special use permit for a substandard law of record for the purpose of installing an eighteen foot, uh, in diameter above ground pool. Mr. Gordon?
Chairman, again, I'll take the special use permit first, but it's record. Petition for lot through all the criteria I vote to approve, isn't that all of the criteria we were. In regards to the dimensional variance, a pool is a permitted accessory use in a residential zone. The, uh, fifteen foot rear yard variance that you requested, in my opinion, is reasonable in this case. It has utility lines and railroad tracks in the rear yard, and it's not going to affect the residential of others. I think it's a reasonable request, and I vote to approve that. In regards to the uh, lot coverage variance, petitioner's only adding three percent. And again, given Common Fence Point and a substandard law of record, in my opinion, this is a reasonable request of twenty-five percent. Uh, so I vote to approve the five percent lot coverage variance request.
Thank you. Mr. Fieron?
Mr. Chairman, I also vote to approve the special use permit, the lot covered, lot coverage variance, and the rear yard setback variance for reasons cited by Mr. Gordon.
Thank you very much. Ms. Harwitz?
I vote to approve all three variances for reasons previously stated.
Thank you, Mr. Wadiger.
I also vote to approve all three, for reasons previously stated.
Chairman also votes to approve both the special use permit and the two dimensional, uh, the dimensional variance and lot coverage variance for reasons previously stated by Mr. Gordon, so. You also have Mr. Godak, you can approve.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Have a good night.
You as well. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, both sides adjourn. That's for the record, starting next month. All voting members are required to be in attendance, we can't do a dance or anything. So, you know, okay?
That's fine.
I thought so. Okay, now I entertain a, uh, motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. That's a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in paper? Alright.